Ladies and gentlemen, I call this meeting to order today. Welcome everybody here for our July the 11th, 2024 Board Supervisors Meeting. Anybody that's in the virtual world would like to welcome you all here today, too. Our first item on our agenda today is an indication by Pastor Lee Farmer.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir. Glad to have you here.
Let me pray for you real quick. Heavenly Father, thank you for blessings and opportunities to serve. Thank you for our 248 years of being a nation, celebrating independence. We know, Lord, that we are a blessed nation, but help us to not take those blessings for granted. As this meeting is conducted tonight, we pray that you will guide our Board of Supervisors, their thoughts and their actions, that every decision will be for the betterment of this community. I pray all these things in your precious name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Farmer. Paul Stanford, Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which expands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. All right, our next item on the agenda would be the approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, anything?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to do it now or later, but move the closed meeting to the end of the meeting.
Yes, I was going to suggest that. Thank you, Mr. Tadlock. I think that's what we ought to do, is move the closed meeting to the very end. If that's all right with the board. Any other changes? No other changes? If not, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda with the change.
A motion to approve the changes.
All right, I got a motion. Do I have a second? I got a motion, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Approval of minutes. We have minutes from June the 6th, 2024, June the 6th, 2024, I mean, June the 6th, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. Then we had them June the 6th, 24, at 7:00 p.m. Then we had June the 12th, 2024, June the 13th, 2024, June the 18th, 2024, June the 21st, 2024. And I have one correction to the minutes on June the 21st. In, let me just pull it, in section number two, this says motion to approve the FY25 school budget in amount of $21,529,046. It should be $21,529,064. I'd like to stand corrected on that. And I thank Mr. Tadlock for bringing that to my attention. So that's the only change I have. We need to amend that one. You want, you need a motion to amend?
Yes, sir. Basically, what happened was there was a motion, a written motion, with the correct amount, but it was, the numbers were reversed. So we just wanted that clarification because it was actually stated one way, but written another. We wanted that clarification.
Yeah. So that is my motion to change it, and I have a copy of the original motion here, which I want to put into the record.
Yes, sir.
So do I have a second?
A second.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Tadlock, here's a copy of that, so please put that into the record.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That has the, that's the corrected amount, and I turned them around. All right. Now, any other changes or deletions to the minutes? And you want them all in one lump, or you want them separated, Mr. Tadlock?
You can, I would do all of the other ones, but you've taken action on the June 21st, the amendment on that, so.
All right. So we'll do the June 6th, June 6th, June 12th, 13th, and 18th.
Make a motion that we approved the minutes from June 6th to June 18th.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right.
And just to cover, since you just made a motion on the changing that portion of the minutes, if you could just make a motion on approving the minutes for June 21st.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on June 21st, 24.
Second.
Meeting. And I have a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Now, we got that taken care of. All right, next would be update from Northumberland County School. Ms. Booth, good to see you here today.
Thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Yes, ma'am.
I didn't get the blue message, or I would have dressed appropriately.
I think everybody ain't got the same message. Yes, they did.
Hope everyone had a good Fourth of July. Just a few things for you this evening. We have quite a few reimbursements which are pending, so I guess everybody's trying to get their money at the end of the year. We have a total of $1,134,959 in our reimbursement with the state that has been approved, and we're just waiting for them to send the appropriate, or send the money through electronic transfer. So that money should be coming into the treasurer's office literally any minute. Certainly, it should all be in before your next meeting. It's been taking longer. It's been taking, some of this was put in at the beginning of, one was put in at the beginning of June and just finally got through, but most of it was put in during the month of June, and we're still waiting for the funds. We had hoped that we would close out all of our ESR funds for this fiscal year. We were not able to get that finished. We have until September 30th to spend that money or to reimburse that money. We have until September 30th to spend it. We have until November 15th to reimburse it. So we've gotten a lot of that done, but we just haven't been able to finish it. So we'll have that done before the deadline. We won't lose any of that. And that's really it. Looking forward to starting a school year and doing all of the end-of-the-year things with the budget and trying to get everything rolling. Do you gentlemen have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Booth? No questions. Staff, any questions?
The only thing, we do have the appropriations or transfer of monies for the school division while Ms. Booth is here, in case you have any questions, but it's, the board had during the budget cycle, proved it more as a lump sum until the school division could provide the correct categories in which those monies needed to be funneled into. So in your packet, you do have the transfer of funds from the appropriation fund of $6,000, $6,005, to $6,100 is $7,714,755, to $6,200 is $716,356.50, to $6,300 is $779,297.50, to $6,400 is $1,070,0256, to $6,600 is $15,000, to $6,700 is $4,332, and to $6,800 is $464,535. So if we could get, and that's, the board, the way you all set that up was half now and then appropriation and half to be appropriated later, so.
Half and half.
This is only half of the appropriation. It's been appropriated, but we need to transfer it into those specific categories.
All right, gentlemen.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? All right. No? One against.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Yeah, all right. Any board members have anything else before we go? You have anything else, Mr. Tadlock?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Booth, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
All right, next is a update from Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. Beal, good to see you, sir.
Hey, good to see you all. It's good to be with you. I'm going to raise this up a little bit, maybe. All right, we've been busy cleaning pipes. We've been down on Lewisetta Road, Roland Road, and Chesapeake Drive and Fairport Road. We cleaned ditches on Reed Avenue and in Indian Creek subdivision on Fairport, on Route 200 and 360. We repaired shoulders on 360 and on 600. We've cut brush on Cross Hills, Apple Grove, Remo Road, Bush Mill, and in Mallard Bay subdivision. And we've repaired signs, patched potholes countywide, as well as completed a mowing cycle, as well as a litter pickup countywide. On the plan, we've got a bunch of ditch cleaning, and I won't read all those routes, but we will be in Indian Creek subdivision and Sherwood Forest subdivision. We'll continue to grade gravel roads and patch potholes and repair signs. We have a pipe replacement planned on Ganyan Road and Rehoboth Road, and we'll be cleaning pipes on Gardie's Mill, Ganyan, Brickyard, Candy Point Road, and Liberty Road. The slurry seal schedule is still under construction down Lewisetta and Shore Lane. The first coat there has been done, the surface treatment part. They'll come back and do the seal, the final application there, probably not until August, so that'll remain under construction for a while. The surface treatment schedule is complete. All those routes are done. I did want to get some direction from the board tonight on Addy's Point Road. We had, we were going to start that last week. The citizen there asked that we not surface treat it, so I was going to just check in with the board, make sure you all do want to move in another direction and leave that as a gravel road.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board on that?
I went down and looked at that road, and matter of fact, I got some pictures of it, if anyone would like to see them. And it's probably one of the least-used roads that I know of. It has grass growing in it. It's a state highway with grass growing in it, so it evidently doesn't get graded because it doesn't get used. And I think Mr. Tribble had asked that, he didn't see the necessary sense of spending the money. There's no houses at the end of it. It's only a piece of a barn. I think that's fallen down. But I agree with Mr. Tribble. I don't see wasting the money right now.
All right, how does the rest of the board feel?
Right, I agree.
You agree? All right.
All right, Tyler, we'll have to have a public hearing to add another project, because that's the only project that's in your secondary six-year plan.
Okay.
And honestly, I'm not sure if you technically have to have a public hearing to take Addy's Point off, but what we'll do is we'll just do another public hearing in the spring when we do our annual update, anyway. We'll take Addy's Point off, and you all can pick what you want to put on there. At that time, we'll just sit on, we'll just sit on it until then.
Okay.
All right, and then the last thing that's on there is the Scour project at Bush Mill Creek. That was advertised in May. We did get favorable bids back, so we are moving towards award, and as soon as I have a schedule. There were like four or five other bridges that were advertised in that bundle for those types of repairs, this being one of them. So they may not start on that for several months, maybe next year. But as soon as I have that schedule, I'll let you know. But that's all I had, unless you all have anything for me.
All right, any board members have anything, Mr. Beal? Mr. Williams?
I don't have any concerns from constituents at this time, but thank you guys for working in the brutal conditions that you've been working in. I know it's not easy as someone that works outside, and it probably is underappreciated a lot of times, so just thank you.
Thanks. I'll pass that on.
I agree. And thank you for helping us with the road signs during the burning period and all, too. Very helpful.
I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the public meeting for the restryping in Calio and Lottsburg is August 1st.
August 1st. What time's that one?
Five. Five to seven at the Calio Fire Department.
Better be ready for that one. August 1st, 8:01, 5:00 p.m. Man, there's going to be a crowd there. Mr. Long, you have anything?
Not at this time.
Mr. Brand?
No.
Fisher?
No, sir.
All right. I do appreciate you getting these secondary roads and all resurfaced again. Some of them were in great bad shape and all, so it looks good. People have been pleased to get something done.
Good. Thank you.
All right, and thank you for those signs again, too, for the burn ban. That's been very helpful.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll get a little rain, starting a cloud up out there, so hopefully we'll get a little something.
I hope we get some rain. We need it. If you do a rain dance, bring it on. Greatly appreciated.
All right, thank you all.
All right, thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, excuse me. Did you need any specific action by the board on Addy's Point tonight to not proceed with that project, or?
I mean, everybody gave me a head nod. That's all I need.
I didn't know if you need it more than just the.
We'll get the formal in the spring.
Okay. All right, no comment.
Thanks.
All right, next item would be county administrators' report.
Yes, sir. For June, we had 12 new structures. Total construction cost for the month was $6.3 million. Total construction cost year-to-date is $32.5 million, and that puts us up this year over last year approximately $2.9 million. Next item I have is the board did declare a local emergency. It was established on June 24th and related to the burn ban. I do need the board to ratify that decision.
All right. Motion to approve the resolution for ratifying the burn ban. All I need is a second. All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. How you going, Mr. Tadlock?
All right, next item I have is a petition to the governor to declare Northumberland County a disaster area due to the drought and heat, and this is tied to the, specifically for the farmers to hopefully obtain some additional aid for them. I have provided this to the adjoining localities for their consideration if they wish to present it to their boards as well.
A motion to approve, then.
All right, got a motion and a. Second. Second. All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, all those against? All right.
Next item I have is I need to read the abstract votes from the primaries held on June 18th, 2024. For the Republican primary, Hung Kao has had 533 votes, Edward "Eddie" Garcia Jr., 30, Jonathan Emmard, 65, Chuck Smith, 46, and Scott Thomas Parkinson, 37. For the Democratic primary, member of House of Representatives, Leslie Metta, 217 votes, and Herbert C. Jones Jr., 179 votes. Next item I have is the electoral board received reimbursement associated with the March 2024 presidential primary. They are asking, those monies were received in fiscal year '24, however, they are asking that those monies be appropriated to 1301-7002 under their capital outlay as they anticipate the purchase of new electronic poll books. And Mr. Slater is here this evening, in case you have any questions specifically related to that. There was a pretty detailed description as far as the request in your board docs.
Mr. Slater?
Yes, sir.
Would you be so kind, come forward, please. Any board members have any questions, Mr. Slater?
You just want to do some upgrading again, sir?
Yes, sir. This, there's a quirk in the state law, you know, elections cost the county. We have to print the ballots and all this kind of thing. And for presidential primaries, we can be reimbursed for some or all of that expense. And so what the county has received is a little over $12,000 reimbursement for the March primary. It went into the general fund, and we're asking it to be appropriated to the electoral board's budget for capital outlay. The electronic poll books that we are now using will no longer be supported by the manufacturer after the end of next year, and we wanted to go ahead and use that reimbursement to purchase new electronic poll books. We want to wait until the end of this year to buy them, because if we were to buy them right now, we would be replacing equipment just before the presidential election, which we don't want to be doing. So this, the biggest portion of this reimbursement would be used to replace the electronic poll books.
Okay.
How old were the poll books?
The ones that we have right now are pushing nine years old, and the manufacturer, as I say, has informed us that they are not going to support them after December of next year.
Didn't give you much choice, does it?
No, not much.
Not much. Any other board members have any questions or comments? Any staff have any comments, questions? All right, you need a motion.
Need a motion for supplemental appropriation to 1301-7002 in the amount of $12,105.
Move to approve, then.
supplemental appropriation. I got a motion and approve. I got a motion and approve, and that's what, $12,105.
$12,105.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming.
All right, the next several items regarding the wastewater treatment plant service agreement and generator, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Willard and Mr. Basie, as they've been more in tune to that specific project there. Mr. Willard's here.
Mr. Willard, Mr. Basie. Whoever wants to start first.
All right, the first one we have is the service agreement for the, all the generators we have within the sanitary district. Right now, we do not have a service agreement that ran out at the end of June. That was with Fidelity out of Richmond. Over the past couple of years, we've been having some issues with Fidelity of not fulfilling some requirements in the contract with the agreement. We do have a lot of newer generators now, and it's detrimental for those to have the correct fluids in them, and we've had to go and go back behind them a couple of times after some service has been done and things have been incorrect. We have installed right many Carter Katz generators in the past couple of years, and I got a quote from them to see what it would cost for their service agreement, and I think it's in y'all's packet. I think it's additional $2,000 some dollars higher than what we were paying Fidelity. In the scheme of things, I think that $2,000 would be really overlooked with the better treatment that we will receive with Carter Katz versus Fidelity.
You said you'd had, you'd run across some problems where they had not done the service?
Yeah, I'd seen that some fuel filters hadn't been changed, our filters and radiator hoses, and they came back and fixed them, but I shouldn't have to ask them to do it.
That falls back on the people that they send.
Correct. Yep.
Board members have any questions, comments?
I think Carter has a outstanding reputation for service.
Carter's a good company to work with, or work with, work for.
Sometimes the cheapest is not always the best.
Exactly.
Well, Mr. Basie, you have anything you want to add to it, anything?
Not on this one. My commentary is going to be more on the generator discussion.
All right, okay. So, Mr. Willard, you were recommending that we go with Carter.
Yes, sir.
What's the pleasure of the board?
I moved, we go with Carter Katz for the generator maintenance.
Got a motion and a second. Got any other discussion?
Only that perhaps in a year's time, you can come back and let us know how they've been doing.
Yes, sir. I can do that.
All right. No other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. How you going, Mr. Willard?
Thank you.
All right. Next would be, so you have, Mr. Willard, or you have something else?
He's got the, next item is generator.
Generator, all right. And I think Mr. Basie said he was going to take that.
I'm going to let Mr. Willard discuss his needs there, and then.
All right.
When we look at the financial side, I've got some numbers for y'all.
Is that available, put up on the screen?
This generating question took a turn for the worse last week. Basically, something happened internally with the fuel system. Filled the crankcase full of diesel fuel and spun a bearing in the motor. We're looking at a 1976 model Unan generator. It was included in the CIP plan for this fiscal year, which I've been told that nothing was funded for that this year, so it's been known that it needs to go, and it's gone. So we got a couple quotes from Paul Ron and Fidelity also. That should all be in your packet, too. Under Paul's quote, we were looking at putting a 30 KW generator in, and both his quote and Fidelity's has a extended lead time of 12 to 15 weeks. Carter Katz does have a 40 KW in stock that can go at any moment, once we, if we fill the contract, and it was just a minor increase from, bear with me, it's a lot of papers here, $48,007.02 to $49,000, I think it's $716, as a little increase, we go from a 30 to a 40 KW.
And there's, it's in stock, ready to go.
In stock, ready to go, for the 40.
And what's their turnaround time as far as getting it installed?
I would think if I can get in touch with Paul, he might be able to do something within three weeks. I don't know what his schedule is right now, but he knows that we're down, and I feel like he would work with us and try to get us back up and running as soon as we could.
You'd be replacing a 30 KW unit?
No, we will be replacing a 15 KW. We have been wanting to double the capacity at these pump stations for future growth. If we need to put bigger pumps in, bigger motors, we would have the capability of supporting those.
Why do you think the price difference between the two units is so insignificant?
I guess it's a unit that's in stock. It's something that they don't have to wait or have built, because that's, once you, that's the timeframe for the manufacturer to build the unit.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the board? How much difference was that again?
It's $1,000.
$1,000 difference?
Yeah.
Mr. Fisher, you have any questions?
What did we do with the unit over at the sheriff's office?
That unit at the old sheriff's office is still there. It's still operational.
I don't know what the KW is on.
I do not, no, sir.
Just curious, sitting there.
I know, it's just sitting there.
Sitting there.
I believe they still use that for the gate and the pumps when power goes out.
When power goes out.
Yes, sir.
They would have to. That's the only way they're going to get in there.
Yeah.
After any comments, questions? All right, what's the pleasure of the board? How much waiting time is it if we go for lesser price?
The lesser price was for the 30 KW from Paul was 26 weeks.
You're going to go with Carter Katz for.
And you're down right now?
Yes, we're down. We do have a backup emergency pump in place there now.
Gentlemen, I think we need to go ahead and proceed, even though it is $1,000 more, that facility is down. Can't afford to be down too long. Can't afford for it to be down too long.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we proceed.
All right. I got a motion.
A second.
A second. All right. Got any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Mr. Willard, go ahead and proceed with that.
Mr. Willard, I believe you want to tell us or talk about the change orders for the plant as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
You got change orders for the plant?
I think this has been going on now for what, a couple of months now, trying to get most of this resolved. Drew's been doing a lot of work between USDA and the engineer, but it's a change, we talked about change order five, right?
Yes. Change, well, change order four for the lab work, the board approved at a prior meeting for the, for us to move forward with the county contribution being no more than a hundred thousand. Half of that coming from the sanitary district fund and half coming from CIP monies. We're waiting to get that approved by WQIF, DEQ, WQIF to determine how much they are going to be funding to deter, so we'll know if we want to go forward or not. Change order five is only, can't use WQIF funds, but can use USDA funds, which is for something at Calio at that site, change order. And looking at where we currently are budget-wise for that, between grants and, and loans, with change order five, i-if we go with that, it's going to cost the county an additional six hundred and thirty-five dollars is what my numbers are showing, that that would be over budget, additional to what we already are, and it would put us a total over budget of forty-four, eight twenty-two. We currently are over budget because of, I, um, we had some confusion with WQIF monies on one of their, on the initial application for reimbursement that Rob Mangram worked on with them, and it got, it's, a, a lot of it clarified and cleared up, but we ended up being shorted there, forty-one thousand, six forty-four, which is what we're trying to recapture with the change order for the lab at Reedville. But, so we'll end up being, having to contribute forty-four thousand, eight twenty-two regardless of, let me show that one, regardless of if we use, do change order four or not. But with change order four, we were committing up to a hundred thousand, and I guess the question is, it's twofold. Does the county want to contribute? If WQIF does not approve it, does the county want to pick up the full one thirty-eight, eight forty-four for change order four, which is the lab? Or do they want to pull back out and say, no, we're not going to do change order four? And then the other option is, do we want to just withdraw change order four altogether, knowing we've got the forty-nine thousand that we just approved for this generator that's going to be coming out of general fund, CIP, or sanitary district somewhere as well? So that, that's just kind of the, the, the numbers I wanted y'all to be thinking about on that. Any questions for me at this time?
Any questions?
You're talking about the change order for the labs, so what, what work does that consist of?
I'm going to let David talk about what work is within each change order, but just, I've got the financial side for you.
All right. Change order four for the rebuild wastewater treatment plant was the, for the exterior of the building was to install gutters, windows, doors, some concrete walkways, what we call the tool room. We wanted some newer light fixtures, some drywall and paint, upgrading the bathroom with new flooring, um, with a new sink, toilet water heater and lighting. Inside of the, the lab itself was new flooring, all new lights, cabinets and countertops. And the old mechanical room that had the generator, we wanted to convert that into a break room, lunchroom, which would be putting up a few walls and a little bit of masonry work and some doors. So we would have a functioning place to sit down and be able to, the employees sit down and eat lunch, take a break.
How old the building is this?
It's nineteen seventy-six.
And nothing's been done to it since then?
The only thing that's been done, it's, we've, we painted it probably three years ago and redid some of the gable ends, and it has a new roof installed. That's it. Still the original hot water heater.
You know, we've had discussions on this board in the past about maintaining buildings in the, here in the county, and we've lost a couple of buildings because they haven't been maintained.
Probably we need to, we need to maintain building and property, especially for what it's being used for.
How much is the change order again?
The total for the rebuild plant was one thirty-eight, eight forty-four. Am I correct?
Yes, that is correct.
And the one thing to add to this, though, too, is that we, we know we're trying to wait for DEQ to give us an answer on some grant money. This could be six months out. The only thing I feel is that if we wait longer and the contractor does eventually pull off site, he might not be willing to fulfill this requirement for this change order in the future if we don't let him know something pretty soon.
All right. Much pleasure, the board.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we move forward. A second.
Got a motion to proceed with change order? All right. Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Would it be in our best interest to maybe walk down and look through to see, not that I don't trust David's opinion on what needs to be done, but I'd like to see it. Is it something we could hold off until, until our next meeting possibly? Would that put you on?
I don't think that would hurt anything.
Well, we're going to have to have a meeting probably next week.
I like to get a tour of the place anyway.
Yeah.
So we could, if that's what you want to do, we could all get down and have a bye then, by a meeting date.
That's fine. I'll withdraw a motion.
If y'all want to withdraw your motion in a second.
That's fine.
And what's a good time to come down and you buy lunch?
It doesn't matter. Anytime after ten o'clock is.
Anytime after ten. Yeah, because I know you've got certain things to do, and I don't want to interfere with your, with your schedule.
Same is fine.
Okay.
We will have the divers, I think, next week, no, week after the next, that's the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth.
Correct.
To dive on that Oatfall.
Okay.
They've been tied up with the Navy, so he's finally got a breakaway to come down there to us.
All right. All right.
Do you, do you need anything with change order five?
I was going to ask if you, and that's just a discussion for change order fours, you want to?
Speak up a little bit.
I was just going to say, that was just a discussion for change order four that you wanted to hold until next week, or if you have your next meeting. Have a change order five for, for the Calio site, there's some other work that needs to be done there.
Yeah, let's, let's hear about, about change order five.
That's what's going to cost us, an extra six hundred dollars and change.
Extra six hundred and?
Over budget from what we have left.
Over budget.
And that's just the Patterson, um, the construction contract. That's not to say we won't have additional invoicing from Mangram Consulting or any other contractor along the way that is not factored into that number of that six thirty-five that will be over.
All right. All right. Much pleasure, the board, on that one.
Move forward with?
Move forward.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
It was six hundred and?
Six thirty-five.
Right.
Someone says it's, you know, six thirty-five?
Yes.
Yeah, all right.
That's the amount the county would be contributing above and beyond the remaining grant balances, is six thirty-five.
Six thirty-five is what the county needs, needs to contribute.
We'll have to be, we'll be contributing, it'll be over budget by that amount for any contractors.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. There you go, Mr. Willard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Basie.
Mr. Chairman, I would say, and when coordinating with Mr. Willard on that, if you could limit the number that visit the site at any particular time to two members or less.
Yeah, thank you.
Just so you don't have a fiscal call. Next item we have is an update for the regional emergency radio system, and Chief Balderson is here this evening.
Chief Balderson, be so kind to come up.
Good afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Glad to see you here.
Well, it's good to be seeing you, sir.
It is.
Always good to be seen.
Before I get into this, I'd just like to take a second. On behalf of staff of the Department of Emergency Services, I want to thank you all for the, for the budget process and what you did for us. It's very much appreciated, and I wanted to publicly thank you for that. Getting into the radio system, before we get into what I believe is in your packet, I'll give you a little bit of an update on where we act totally with the radio system. So we have completed what is considered DDR, Detailed Design Review, and that is how we got to the point of the change orders that we have for you. The lease agreements have been signed with the Lotsburg and Heatsville Towers with ATC. We're currently working with the Navy on the Surprise Hill Tower, and we are making headway with that. L-Three Harris is working, actually sent an email today that they're starting to look at the, cutting the PO for the structural analysis on that. So we're making progress at, at that point of the radio system. While working through the Detailed Design Review, we identified some issues within the, the radio system design that needed to be honed, if you will, to make it more efficient for us to use and for it to operate. I believe in your packet you have the spreadsheet that L-Three Harris had provided for us of different things that we talked about throughout that change order, throughout that Detailed Design Review. In there, you'll see some things that do not have any prices. Those are things that have either been reduced by L-Three Harris through negotiation, or we have found alternate ways to be able to fund that at a cheaper price, doing it through a third party versus going through L-Three Harris. So as you look down through that, you'll also see there is some grounding remediation that L-Three Harris has put in there. And we knew that was coming when they came out and did the site visits when we kicked off the radio system. So there are some grounding issues they identified at Surprise Hill and over at the sheriff's office tower to make sure that the grounding is sufficient for the new radio system so that we don't hopefully suffer lightning strikes and damage that we have occurred in the past. So with that total spreadsheet that you have before you, that equals out to one oh one, four, three fifty-six. We have done some negotiations with L-Three Harris to get it to that price there. There are a couple of little negotiations still left. I talked with the regional radio manager, Mr. Greg Hunter, about the final draft that they sent us on the change orders, and he feels that there are a couple of little things that we may be able to save a thousand dollars or so in there. So the next thing on the sheet is the radio chargers. When, when looking through the project, there were no radio chargers for apparatus or vehicles. So I met with the, the public safety group and some of the fire departments and, and the rescue squads wanted to have what's called a six gang charger, so it's six bank charger that they could put in the station to charge after batteries, or someone comes to the station, they've been out, you know, working, they can put their radio in the charger and charge it while they're there at the station. Also requested by Calio Volunteer Fire Department is two of those, one for each of their two engines, so that their charge, portables that they have on the apparatus will be able to charge while it's on the apparatus. So the total for the nine of those was six thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars and seventy cents. Also, while reviewing, um, the speaker mics that are coming, you know, that are in the contract, if you will, with the portable radios are not waterproof, and they only are rated for a hundred and forty-six degrees of temperature. And looking at that and, and thinking about from a fire department perspective, again, talked with the fire departments about that, and L-Three Harris does provide a mic, microphone for the portable that is rated for five hundred degrees, and it is water submersible up to one meter. They do have two variations. This variation is the cheaper of the two. The other variation is quite expensive. So just to do the two volunteer fire departments and upgrade their speaker mics is twelve thousand, seven hundred and fifty. The other variation of that speaker mic is forty-six thousand dollars. If we move down to the headsets, it was identified in, by the regional radio manager and also the emergency services chief of Essex, that the headsets really need to be in the dispatch center. Currently, they're using microphones similar to what you have there. And the background noise, sometimes you can hear the background noise, and from what the regional radio system manager has advised me is that the newer system with those mics, it will be even worse. So if, if fire and EMS is on one channel and the sheriff's office is on another channel and one's talking, the, the other's going to hear it if that dispatcher keys up that mic, and it may distort what the dispatcher is trying to tell either entity, whether it's fire and EMS or the sheriff's office. So we just want to make sure that we have a good, clear communication system, and we feel with the headsets that will be the way to go. And in those headsets, we have designed the system so that the supervisor will also be able to plug into an extra port that is in that spreadsheet that L-Three Harris provided to be able to assist, to assist that dispatcher should they need to. So they wouldn't have to unplug from one port and the supervisor plug in, so those ports are, are beside each other. The headsets are bought third party, so we're going to use the same headsets that Essex and King and Queen are currently using, and those headsets are about two hundred dollars per set cheaper than what L-Three Harris had quoted us. So that's why you, you see on that spreadsheet L-Three Harris provided us, there isn't a quantity there, and that's the reason why. The, the big, um, the big hit here is the pagers that were in what is called a device count. So the device count is all the portables, mobile radios, and pagers for the entire public safety community in the county. From the sheriff's office, EMS, the fire departments, everybody that's using it, sanitary district. When I was given the radio system, all the information was given to me from the planning group. In reviewing that, going through DDR, I realized that the numbers did not add up when it came to the pager column. Going back and investigating that, what I found out was when the spreadsheet was made for the two fire departments, there were asterisks put beside each number to indicate that a pager needed to be programmed to activate the house siren. Well, in Excel, when that, when that asterisk was put beside those two numbers, it wouldn't allow Excel to add those numbers into the column. So the fire department pages were omitted in the total sum of the column, even though they were in there, Excel didn't put it in there. So when, when the system was signed off on, it was signed off for seventy-three pagers when it actually should have been a hundred and sixty-five. So that's the, that's how we get the, um, the difference of the ninety-two pagers, to be able to give the exact pages that we need to the two volunteer fire departments. With that, you see the total cost there of a hundred and eighty thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and twenty-six cents. With the sheriff being able to get the grant for the portables that he has purchased thus far, it has given us a savings of ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty-eight cents, thus leaving us with a balance to, for all of these change orders, if you will, for eighty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents. So that's what I'm, I'm coming before you tonight to ask for the approval of, of these change orders. And if you so move to approve those, then I will start ordering the radios and getting those out to the fire departments and to the EMS agencies so that we can start using those radios as well on the system, as well as starting to program the pagers.
What's left in the radio fund?
Um, we haven't dipped into any of the contingency funds at this point, but we did get additional monies from Bank of America in our loan, so we, we would have enough to cover this, this portion of it.
The RSFA grant is going to reopen. Is anyone going to apply for some more radios on that, too, as well?
I had not planned on applying for radios, because I have to check to see if we will be eligible to do that, because some grants won't let you supplant what you're already doing.
Right.
So if, if we did radios, it would be addition to what's already in the grant. We couldn't take that money and supplant the grant, I mean, the, the system.
So with the amount of radios that's, that's going to be ordered? So, with the amount of radios that's gonna be ordered, is there gonna be a cache of radios? Like, one gets lost, one gets broken, or we have an emergency event, you need extra radios?
Yes. There are additional radios built into the system. When the totals were done, there were additions put in there for that. But to go back to your original question, the plan, my plan is to, when grants come available, whether it's through VDM or another entity, is to try to build that cash up a little bit more.
Yeah, but board members having comments, questions? Staff have any comments or questions? Well, I guess my next question is always pleasure to board.
We have the funding in the contingency part of the radio system, so I'll move forward with the motion that we move forward with the change orders.
Second. With the $83,261.78? All right. Mr. Long, your second time? All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against? All right. Mr. Ballson, your motion passes, sir.
All right, thank you.
You have anything else?
Just to let you know that we hope to start construction on the radio in August. So, if everything continues to flow like it has been with the approval of this tonight, and we have a meeting tomorrow, hopefully, we can get DDR signed off on, hopefully, in the next week or so, and then L-3 Harris is ready to go to start construction then. We've already, they've already ordered the shelters and they've already ordered the generators, as you heard from Mr. Wilded Lee, time on generators is quite distant. So, they already ordered those because of those issues so that we had those and wouldn't have to wait on it. So, hopefully, everything will fall into place and we'll start construction on the radio system in the next month. But thank you all for your support and thank you for their approval.
All right, and thank you for all the time you've been putting into it.
Yes, sir.
Has there been a plan yet for what's gonna happen with the old Motorola equipment?
I can't say that there's a plan in place yet, but there is, it is on my mind to start talking with Mr. Basie and Mr. Tadlock about moving in that direction because of when this new system goes online and we make sure that there are no bugs in the system and it's working properly, then we need to make sure that that comes off the towers and gets decommissioned so that we're not charged for leased space because of that, so yes.
Some of that equipment can bring you some money, not a lot, but you can recoup.
That's what Mr. Durham told me, that I think Essex had sold some of theirs when it happened.
Yeah, we've done the system over there that we handed out a radio, we got a radio back. Even though the radios, just like here, we've gotten, received through grants and what have you, the county is purchasing the radios for this system. So, when we done, handed out radios, we done an exchange. And done two things. It cleaned up the old radio equipment, but it also got equipment back in hand so it could be inventoried and could be repurposed somewhere else and sold and some money coming back to the county.
Gotcha.
That was, that worked pretty good. You're not gonna get rich off of it, but.
Right. Any little bit helps?
Yeah.
Right. All right, any other comments, questions?
All right, thank you.
Chief Ballson, thank you very much.
Appreciate your help.
Next item I have is the board had asked that the properties that were reviewed by the Planning Commission be brought back to the board in July. You have a copy of that report, and Mr. McKenzie is also here for the board if you have any specific questions. If it's something that you'd like to dive into a little bit deeper, we can set up another meeting to discuss those properties a little bit more in depth, however you all would like to proceed.
Always pleasure to board.
I'd like to set up another meeting to dive into.
All right.
I think we need, like Mr. Long said, I think we need to set up another meeting for this and look at the whole list.
They are quite extensive, once you get into them. Just two or three here and there.
Right. Because I think it's potential that we could move some of that property on and reinvest that money back into the county.
All right. We can, we gotta set a date for another meeting here for long anyhow. Tadlock's got some items we need to discuss, so.
Okay.
Probably have time, do it then, or we can do it another night.
We can try and maybe schedule it if you want to look at it next week, maybe set a time earlier rather than a later time. But we can discuss that after the public hearing tonight.
Okay.
Next item I have is, just wanted to give you an update. You do know that we received the grant, the planning grant for the housing assessment through the Northern Neck Planning District Commission and DHCD. We do have the kickoff meeting scheduled for that, and that's set for July 24th of this month, so.
Okay.
Also, just want to bring everybody up to date. We had a meeting with Congressman Whitman today. Mr. Williams and Mr. Haney were on that call along with the Army Corps of Engineers, Baltimore District, Jerry Davis of the Northern Neck Planning District Commission, and Mark Mansfield, who is assisting the Northern Neck Planning District Commission in the localities on the regional effort for the Virginia Port Authority grant monies that we were seeking for dredging projects. As you know, a lot of attention is being placed on the Little Waukamiko and its dredging and the need to dredge that sooner rather than later. So, one of the discussion items that we had, we did have, received the Virginia Port Authority Phase III funding that is usually, or typically, a 12 to 18-month time period in design work and so forth. So, one of the discussions is, okay, how can we maybe move that along a little bit further or quicker? Another aspect of that is looking at dredge spool sites and identifying those areas. The Army Corps of Engineers has done some survey work, and they've provided that to the Northern Neck Planning District Commission and Mark Mansfield. So, there are some efforts getting underway, but the timing of that and funding for Army Corps of Engineers does not seem to look like it's gonna be readily available. So, there may be some other things that we need to take a look at. And what I would suggest is that I can get with Jerry Davis of the Northern Neck Planning District Commission and Mark Mansfield and look at early next steps and have the board meet directly with them as they have a lot of knowledge in that area, especially Mr. Mansfield, and kind of look at what potential avenues we have to move forward sooner rather than later. If that's okay with the board, I'll start that process with them. But just wanted to make you aware that it's still on our radar. We do know it's an issue that needs addressing sooner rather than later, so.
What was the initial length of the dredging in Little River? Was it the entire channel in the jetties or just the hump which is causing the problem?
I would have to go back. I think they said the last dredging was 2014.
2014 was the last dredging?
The survey that they did in December of last year, December 2023, identified roughly between 6,000 and 7,000 cubic yards that needed to be dredged. However, I think they are looking at, when they are trying to identify the spool sites, trying to identify areas that do the emergency dredge now, but later, after we get past that 6,000 to 7,000 cubic yards, to come back and do a more extensive dredging project, but identify the spool sites ahead of time so that we don't have to go back through some of the permitting process, so.
I think the less extensive project, which was the 60-some-hundred cubic yards, what I'm not crazy about, and this is what I picked up on during the conversation, is there's a possibility that some of that money could be county money. And I'm concerned about setting the precedent where we're gonna be leaned on to pay for dredging projects in the future because we did it this time. I don't know if you picked up on that in that conversation or not.
I did pick up on that, but also picked up on to it that if the county is putting up money, that they kind of shove out ahead of a lot of the other requests. So, it didn't say how much money, but I don't know. This was done back in, what, 2014 is the last time it's dredged, that's 10 years. And she's got that shoal in there now, so.
That shoal is a, it's a dynamic shoal. You dredge it today and it's back tomorrow. But you got just as much water, pretty much, in the main channel of the jetties as you do the whole river. It's that knoll that makes the problem.
So, that initial dredging project at 6,300 cubic yards, that was to bring the total depth in the channel to eight feet? Army Corps, if they did it later, they would bring it to a depth of possibly 10 feet, I think.
You haven't got a whole lot of that, much more than that in the whole river.
Right. But like Mr. Tadlock said, that was, could be 18 months out before any of that money would be available, federal money.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the 6,000, between 6,000 and 7,000 cubic feet, or yards, was just to go to the depth of eight feet. But in order, when they were discussing it to go to the 10-foot, would create beyond 30,000 cubic yards of waste material. So, that, I think that's part of the challenge, that they want to make sure that you encompass everything as you're reviewing this.
The last time it was dredged, it sounds like all the spoils were put on the north side of the jetties, up on the beach.
That's exactly right. They were piped up out.
Whether or not.
Pipeline.
Whether or not that all stayed there, I don't guess we'll know, but that's a concern.
It actually closed up the old entrance, Little River Old Entrance, that's what it was used for. But there's, I don't see very little difference in the channel depth from now what it was seven, eight, 10 years ago, other than that hump which has a tendency to make problems. Anything is gonna hit, that's where it's gonna be. And that's about a third of the way inside the main entrance of the channel.
So, that's, I haven't been in it for a little while. So, that's inside the jetty.
Yeah, but a third of the way in.
Because it was showering last year.
You can see the difference in the water swirling around it. It's easy to pick up on.
And I'm just wondering what could be done to maybe avoid that in the future? Or is there anything that could be done?
It's always been there.
I don't know, because the water's gonna do what it wants to do.
To some extent, it's always been there. They dredge it to get rid of it, and then it comes on back. But do you see any problem with the depth of water in the jetties itself other than that hump?
Honestly, I'm not in and out of there a lot myself now, but I'm hearing from the guys that are in and out of there daily that it is worse now than it was this time last year. And most of them bump daily on the way in and out, even on an average tide.
Is that low tide they're hitting?
Average tide.
Average tide, all right. I went in and out of there last fall, all winter during rockfish season. I draw a little less than four feet. I never had any problem. Like I said, it's dynamic. It changes regularly.
I do know that the owner of Smith Point Marina, Mr. Dan Hickey, is turning boats away that call him, you know, that are interested in being a transient boater for the night. He's turning them away, telling them not to come in there, especially sailboats.
Mr. Tadlock, what do you need from us?
I don't think I need anything at this point. It was just more of to address the full board, to let everybody know what is taking place. I will certainly get with Mr. Davis and Mr. Mansfield to figure out next steps. And as we get that information, determine, maybe get the board together to discuss this a little bit further and see how the board wishes to proceed.
Did Mr. Whitman say anything about some possible emergency financing?
They talked about financing. Of course, this is with the Baltimore Army Corps District. And of course, you know, the incident that they had with the Key Bridge up in Baltimore. So, I think funding there has been a little bit more challenging. Another challenging factor is that this, of course, is Baltimore District, but some of the permitting, I think, on the inside of the Little Waukamiko Falls with the Norfolk District. So, it's trying to navigate that field a little bit. It's a lot of moving parts to it, so.
I just found out that the Baltimore District has moved its line south now. Comes down to Great Waukamiko, where Smith Point was the turning point before, between Norfolk and Baltimore. Now Baltimore comes all the way down to Great Waukamiko. It actually comes almost to Duppiden Creek.
Well, I guess, the sooner you can get a meeting set up.
Sure. I'll certainly reach out to Mr. Davis and Mr. Mansfield.
Yeah, then we can all sit down and talk, if that's agreeable with the board then. Anything else on that, Mr. Tadlock, you want to discuss?
No, sir, and that's all I have.
All right, that's all we have. All right. Many reports? I have none right now.
No, I have any?
I have none. I don't think anybody else has any. All right. Board of Supervisors items, we've got now. First would be the check register. I guess everybody's had a chance to review the check register.
Yeah, a motive will approve.
All right. I got a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against? All right. Next would be board comments. Mr. Williams, I'll start with you, sir.
I don't have anything.
Don't have anything, sir. Mr. Long?
Yes, sir. What's the update, Mr. Tadlock, on the old school boy?
Again, it's gonna be tied up in the property discussion that we want to try and schedule another meeting for.
That's all I have.
Mr. Bryan?
Lodge landing. I think we need to take a hard look at that and what we can do to fix that place up a little better than what it is. The canoe and the kayak launching down there looks very nice. The boat ramp is nice, but as you come up the hill where the pavilion and the picnic table is, it's overgrown. You can't use that. And I think we need to take a good look at the shoreline that faces the Overston side. I think we losing some ground down there. And if we're gonna keep that as a public boat land, then we need to keep it where it's gonna be usable.
So, we need to do some bushwhacking down there. Clean it up.
Absolutely.
And picnic table.
Picnic table there, but you gotta have it suitable to be able to set there to use it.
Yeah.
How about the other park? There's another park.
What was that, Mr. Long?
The one in Glee Point?
What's the other park? I was trying to think of it, that people go to.
Burma. Burma can use work too.
Right.
All of them. Both of these places need to be cleaned up.
Right. Right.
They need, like that grass cut back, picnic tables set down there, trash cans.
I did have a complaint over the weekend, the 4th of July week, about trash being on the ground at Burmar Beach. Has the county ever had a trash receptacle down there that was tended to weekly, or?
I think at one time, there was a trash can down there. But what we were finding, I think, at that time, there was a lot of household trash being dumped off there and not really the use.
What it was intended for.
Trash from the use of the site. So it was, that's why the county removed that facility. I will say that Mr. Albright, I think, had indicated that the Burmar Beach has just been bushhogged, so that's recently been done.
Has been bushhogged.
It has.
Been wet? What was that?
Burmar Beach has been just been recently bushhogged.
Okay.
If we get something down up there, down Lodge would help too.
We can look, I know we have that cut regularly.
I think what Mr. Bryan's talking about, it needs to be pushed back.
Okay.
Cut back, instead of just cut to the edge of it. Is that what you're talking about, Mr. Bryan?
Yes, especially if you want a picnic table and a pavilion. I mean, we had a young man doing an Eagle Scope project down there years ago and invested quite much money in there. And, you know, it looked nice, and it can look nice again, but it needs some maintenance.
Well, everything needs maintenance along, and that's what we need to be providing.
Okay, how about the picnic tables? Do we have room for more than one?
Don't know. That's something we would have to take a look at.
I imagine it could be done.
A big improvement would be getting rid of that boat down there, which we're working on now.
Yeah, working on that.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else, Mr. Bryan?
That's all I have.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes, sir. Pray for rain.
Oh, yeah. Pray for a lot of rain. Well, I take that back. Not a whole lot, enough to wet things up really good, but change that. Do I have anything else? Alright. One thing I want to do is update on a forensic audit. We should know something about that at our next board meeting, which will be in August. Hopefully we'll, what's the young lady's name?
Heather Ness.
Yeah. Heather Ness will be here at our next board meeting. So any questions you have after you have seen that report, please feel free to ask at that meeting, because we're going to allow 45 minutes to our timeframe for her to ask, to answer questions. One other thing is, we need to kind of stay up to date on any software changes that we need through the offices, along with the county's offices. Anything that we need to do, any software that needs to be started anywhere, so we need to get that moving. So board members, think about that now. Let's see if there's anything else I got here. I think that's all. Yeah, I think that's all. Staff have anything that they want to?
No, sir.
Alright. Alright, since that's all the board comments, I will open the public comment period. I don't know if I have anybody on the sign up sheet. Mr. Davis, will you be so kind?
Oh, yeah, I'm glad he was up there. He was poor.
You ran into him?
I forgot we didn't bring that in.
Hey, you might have had time.
Richard.
Yes.
We have one more complaint I want to.
You got something else you want to talk about, Mr. Long?
Yeah, I want to talk to Mr. Tadlock. I forgot it.
Well.
But we can go ahead with these first, and then we'll get it.
I didn't hear you.
No use to holding this up after that.
Yeah, you can get that anytime, you want. We'll have plenty of time.
I forgot about it too.
I forgot about it, but man, I'm glad.
I didn't think about it until I started.
Alright, first person on the public comment sign up sheet tonight is William Blackwell.
William Blackwell, I think you want my address?
Yes, sir.
467 Point Road, Heesville, Virginia.
Yes, sir.
And I'm speaking, but I'm anxious to hear what we're going to find out tonight about the proposal from J.C. Vineyard to put in a public pier or a commercial pier on Mill Creek. I think the big thing is, you know, the lack of knowledge is sometimes kind of rough. And one of the things is, we really, no one felt like we'd really gotten the full picture about what's going on here. We heard three, two meetings ago, that there wasn't going to be any trees or anything cut, and it was just going to be some paths. And then everything's been clear cut since then. You know, and we're talking about a little more than a pier, we're talking about a condition of use permit, so we're talking about zoning issues here. And I think that the residents on the creek are all kind of nervous about there, because once you kind of open the door, you don't really know what's going on. And we haven't been able to hear so much, but I'm happy to see that Dr. J.C.'s here tonight, and I hope that he can address that and make everybody feel more comfortable with things. But I will tell you that there was some discussion with Mr. Byrne, his CFO, and there were some adjustments made to the plans that were better. But in the lack of knowing exactly what's going on, in my neighbors and all I've talked to, no one is really comfortable with what we're hearing. But I'm hoping that that's going to be addressed tonight, and maybe we'll all be, feel a lot better about things.
Alright. Thank you, sir. Next person is Mike Rasmussen.
My address is 81 Beach Point Drive, Heesville, Fort Edwardsville. I'd like to thank Mr. Plant and Mr. Tadlock very much for their assistance with the debacle that's going on in the Harbor Point community with the construction that was done in violation of the law, with no plans, permits, or inspections. I had made a 17 pages worth of comments, but I figure I'll save those for another day, so hopefully I can get through this. Alright, I'm better at asking and answering questions than I am being the focal point. Mr. Tadlock and Mr. Plant, both have been exceptionally helpful. They've been available, they've been professional, and they've been listening to everything, almost everything, I have to say, and they can squeak it into their time. And I'd like to thank them very much, along with some of the responses I've got from you, Mr. Haney.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your comments with staff.
Yeah. The project now has been marked unsecure, unsafe, condemned. It's been posted, it's been set up with tape to keep people out of it. And Mr. Tadlock, Mr. Plant has done that numerous times, only to have, and I don't know who it was, I do have my suspicions of who it was, they take the signs down, they take the tape down. Once again, the project is open. The project is in such disrepair, that there is trip hazards there, numerous trip hazards, which would be an absolute trip hazard, especially to the impaired, or to elderly, or to children. Some of the things, I'm not going to go through them all, there was, I think I had 19 or 20, and that wasn't even a complete list of the code violations that exist there. And my background in that, just so you know, I'm not talking as inexperienced. I have 23 years as a code enforcement officer. I was also an assistant fire inspector to the chief fire marshal in Maryland for many years. I have over 15 certifications from the International Code Council, which is equivalent to the Virginia Code Inspection Program via BCC. And I spoke with Mr. Plant, he was kind enough, he does, he's doing a great job. One thing I would stress and really think needs to be done is that, and I believe Mr. Plant is already doing this, but I just want to repeat it. A registered design professional, sometimes called an engineer, has to evaluate this project. There's simply too much wrong with it that anybody could go out. It's like building an airplane without plans, a small airplane, and then having an inspector go out and say, what's wrong with it? Well, he doesn't know, because he can't see behind the walls, he can't see the nails, he can't see the screws. He can't see, he doesn't know what's going on. That's the position they put Mr. Plant in, which isn't a good place for him to be. A registered design professional is going to take days, or weeks, or maybe even months to evaluate this project. That's something that shouldn't be put on Mr. Plant's plate. He's going to need, respectfully, he's going to need help with that. And it's not something that an inspector can do. I managed 20 inspectors in Prince George's County, I was the code enforcement officer, and we, there's no way that we would allow an inspector to do an inspection on a project without plans prepared by a professional. And this is a little sidebar here. Harbor Point clearly has no respect for the law, or for the supervision, supervisors, and the departments in Northumberland County. They repeatedly have made disparaging remarks, blatant lies. They've even gone as far as to speak to the Commonwealth's attorney, wondering why Mr. Plant is coming onto the property. And I don't have firsthand knowledge of this, only what I've heard through the grapevine, and some of what I've heard from the president of the HOA. I would be cautious about going onto the property, again, without some type of documentation from the law. They've talked about Mr. Plant's trespassing, he was invited on, which I don't believe is true. I invited him on, I'm a member. When Mr. Plant made his first appearance there, he was accompanied by the treasurer. And they still are talking about trespassing charges against Mr. Plant. That's the kind of people we're dealing with. Let's see here. To expand a little bit on their lack of respect, they've gotten, the tape has been put up, it's been placarded, it's been said, told that it's a violation of the law. Well, today, one of the board members blatantly out there today, replacing some of the members, the decking boards, which have cut as much as two inches. The joists on this boardwalk are 40 inches apart, two joists, one on each side, 40 inches apart, with two by six length between those two joists. The maximum amount of space you're allowed to have between those two joists is 16 inches. They're wanting to put one joist down the middle, which would make it 20 inches. Four inches doesn't sound a lot, like a lot, but four inches is a lot. When the code says 16, the code means 16, it doesn't mean 20. So as early as today, I have videos, and another one of my neighbors, I have pictures, another one of my neighbors has video of it, and I would ask that whoever has the authority, I'd be happy to provide the names and addresses of the individuals that were involved and blatantly disrespected, and have continually blatantly disrespected Northumberland County and their authorities. Last thing I'd like to talk about, once again, is the securing of it. The tape and the placarding isn't working. As soon as somebody tears it down. There are multiple hazards on that project, multiple. And they keep minimizing what these hazards are, they being the board of directors and some of the members in the community, keep minimizing what these hazards are. If an infirm person, or a child, somebody's not aware of the defects, somebody's walking on it at night, an inch and a half is a heck of a trip hazard, especially when you have over 300 boards there. Of those 300 boards right now, probably 50 or so have an inch and a half to two inch cup in them. So when you're walking on it, you're going to trip. There's a very specific code for stairs. Stairs, you're only allowed to have a 3/8 inch variance in the width of the tread of stairs. They have two sets of stairs. One is 14 and a half, one is seven and something, I think it's seven and a half, I don't remember off the top of my head. I, knowing this, I was pointing this out to somebody, I didn't make it up, I didn't, I wasn't acting, I knew it was there, I stepped onto the second step and tripped. I didn't fall, didn't get hurt, but I lost my balance. An elderly, infirm, a younger child definitely is subject to injury there.
Mr. Rasmussen, I don't mean to be cutting you off, but you only have four minutes, and you've already gone past that.
Can I say one more thing, please?
Make it very short.
I will. I'll make it very short. Please have somebody effectively secure that project. The tape and the placarding aren't working. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Next person is Molly Gray.
Hello, my name is Molly Gray. I also live in Harbor Point, 95 Riverside Court, Heesville. And I basically agree with everything Mr. Rasmussen just said, and thanking y'all for your help with our construction debacle, as we call it. And asking that we continue to get your help, because we really need it. Our HOA president called a special meeting to discuss this for the first time with the members on June 8th. And he said, well, all of the board members said that the boardwalk is perfectly safe, there's nothing wrong with it, and it doesn't need any repairs at all. And I think exact quote was regarding the county, was that they can't enforce that our boardwalk has been condemned. Since then, as Mike said, some of the board members were out there today trying to make some repairs of their own, which is amazing, since they didn't think anything was wrong with it, but also everyone's on orders to stay off of it. And there's no signage, there's no tape, everyone's using it. The board makes it sound like it's okay to use. In fact, they made it sound in a president report here that came out the other day, the quote was something like, "The county involvement is now over because of a technicality." So the message to the memberships is that it's fine, wink, wink, you can use it, it's not a problem, and we're taking care of it by legal action. And so we really appreciate all the support that you can give us to make sure it is brought up to code. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Gray. Alright, I don't have anyone else on the sign up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am.
Karen Pico, PhD type, I live over in Will Comica Church. A year ago, I stood up here to offer my assistance to the board members in trying to look at county financing with respect to the school board. And I have to rise today to thank each and every board member and the county staff for the due diligence that you've done over the past year in examining the school finances. You were able to make some cuts this year while still protecting the hardworking teachers, giving them raises, giving them insurance, all the school employees, all the county employees. My taxes are only going to go up a much smaller amount than was anticipated, so I rise to thank you for your courage, for your respect for us as taxpaying citizens of this county, for your respect for all the county employees. It was a hard job to balance everything, and I have to say thank you for listening to the voices that rose, listening to the data that was presented, and looking at our finances, they're yours too. We all are in this together. We have a lot of folks in this county that live on fixed incomes, and any raises that are in their taxes have to be paid for by cutting somewhere else. And you guys took all that into consideration. It took a lot of meetings, as is evidenced by all the minutes that you had to approve at the very beginning, so I thank you for the generosity of your time, for your courage, and respecting the county citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak? Come on up, ma'am.
Good evening. You've seen me before. My name is Ann Parker. I live at 330 High Water Lane, and I am the person who has the house that directly faces the proposed commercial pier that Robert J.C. is proposing on residential land. I will see and hear everything that happens there day or night. I would just like to remind the board that two people who are representing Dr. J.C., having said they spoke with him, said that there would be no removal of trees. They did, in fact, clear cut it completely, to the very edge. And at the Tuesday meeting of the Wetlands Board, Mr. Mr. McKinley said that he had been unaware that there were going to be trees cut down. And if he was unaware of that, what else have we not heard about? That's all I'm saying. I don't feel comfortable that we've been given honesty. And I'm still extremely concerned. And I hope you will say no. And if you have to say yes, I hope you put enough conditions on it for my peace of mind. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world or anyone that's online tonight like to speak? Got anybody? Anyone that's online like to make a public comment?
I'd like to speak.
Hold on just one second. Hold on. All right. Ma'am? Ma'am? If you come on up.
Hi. I'm Ellen Lane. I live on Mill Creek. My concern with this, and I totally support the vineyard. It's a beautiful venue. It's, it's a great small business in the county. However, opening the door to putting a commercial creek, pier on Mill Creek, I feel opens the potential for more and more to come. How will you be able to say no to the next person that wants to do this? So it's opening a door. They already have seven piers on the creek, Dr. J.C. So I really don't see the need for this pier, commercial pier, on Mill Creek, which is one of the most beautiful pristine creeks around. And I believe that most of the residents on the creek would like it to stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else like to speak? All right. No one else wants to speak? I'll close the public comment period. All right. Does the board want to take a 10-minute recess?
Take a break, ma'am.
All right. We will take a 10-minute recess and be right back. Everybody ready? All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll call this meeting back to order now. And we'll open our public hearings tonight. Our first item is a request by Robert W. J.C., which was tabled until tonight. And we'll pick up where we left off on that. Mr. J.C., I see you here tonight, sir. Welcome you here. Glad to see you, sir. Do you have any additional comments that you want to make before the board makes a decision?
Well, first of all, I want to thank the board for granting me a conditional use permit to operate my vineyard. I have 12 employees and we are open five days a week. We have boat traffic in Mill Creek. It's a harbor for sailboats. And I was hoping that the board would grant me a permit for a pier so that we could service those people and increase our business. Keeps my employees happy and it's another way of increasing the business for Northumberland County.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Any board members have any questions or comments to Mr. J.C.?
I got, I got a question.
All right. Anytime.
The piece of property in question that, that you're requesting the commercial pier to go on, is that the same piece of property that's being timbered?
It's adjacent to it, yes.
But it's not the same piece of property?
No, it isn't.
Is it?
It's, it's under survey. It hasn't been recorded. So let's say, yes, it is the same piece of property.
Okay.
What is, what was the purpose of your question? What were you getting at by asking that?
I just, my purpose of the question is everybody's being concerned about the timber being cut off. And, and my thought process is we have land that's being timbered all over the county. And, and, you know, I understand everybody's concern, but it's not against any rules to timber your land. And I was just trying to figure, you know, was that anything to do with this pier? Or is it, is it just something that he had scheduled to do for another part of a vineyard? I don't know.
It had, the timbering has nothing to do with the pier. There is access to the pier, which has not been disturbed.
Yes, sir.
Actually, actually, Dr. J.C., the piece that's being timbered, if I'm looking at the map here correctly, is land section number 93. That's what's being timbered. The piece where the pier is being built is land section on the tax map of 94.
Correct. It's all part of my property.
Yes. So 94 is not being timbered, to my information. 93 is being timbered.
Uh, no, ma'am. No comments from the public.
You're correct, yes. It's been, there are multiple, there are 31 pieces to the farm. And each piece has been surveyed. And the piece that's being timbered is not being timbered for access to the pier. And it's being timbered under the supervision of the Virginia Department of Forestry.
Okay. Any other comments, anything from the board?
No, sir.
Now, the board has received numerous letters in favor and opposing Mr. J.C.'s application. They have all gone on record. The board has, board members have read it. We're all aware of it. So, you know, all your comments and all, we have taken into consideration. All right. Ma'am, the hearing is closed, ma'am.
But he said something about some choice.
Ma'am, the hearing is closed. I'm sorry. You, if you needed to have sent that in to us.
I'd like to speak to that anyway.
Yes.
I don't know what that's got to do with their decision on this prop, on this application.
And that's...
Who are we to tell anyone that they can't cut timber on their own land if they're doing it within the, the law?
Right. And that's, that's what I was trying to get a good feel for what was going on. And we really can't dig into that because it's...
Speak up a little bit, Mr. Bryan, if you don't mind.
And that was my point. And we really can't question him on that because it's not part of a conditional use permit. Right.
All right. Mr. Williams, have any other comments?
No.
Any other board members have any comments?
But I agree. It's not our business when it comes to that.
All right. What's the pleasure to board?
Can we hear the suggested conditions?
Yeah. Mr. Morrison?
Yes, sir. Suggested conditions, if approved, are that all required permits and/or licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies. The commercial pier shall be constructed as shown on the revised joint permit application received June 25th, 2024. Any proposed grading and vegetation removal shall be approved and mitigated for in the resource protection area. There shall be no overnight mooring of vessels from anyone other than the owner. This permit shall be non-transferable and shall only be associated with J.C. Vineyards and Restaurant. All lighting shall be solar motion-activated lights and shall be directed downward. The applicant has proffered additional conditions to be made part of these suggested conditions. As originally stipulated, the proposed commercial pier is solely for the use of J.C. Vineyard Tasting Room and Restaurant and for no other commercial purpose. In addition to this, the pier may not be passed on to another commercial enterprise as a commercial pier. So there is no misunderstanding. Should the J.C. Vineyard and Tasting Room cease operating, the aforementioned pier will revert to a residential dock. The width of the pier shall not exceed six feet, excluding the far end L, and the length of the pier itself will not exceed 80 feet from the mean high water line, mark to the end of the pier. The ramp will extend from the mean high water portion of the pier to the dry embankment. The size of the L extension shall not exceed 360 square feet. The purpose of the pier is to facilitate customers who wish to visit the vineyard by water, a safe and convenient place to moor their boat and to be picked up or dropped off by boat. No additional commerce shall be conducted on the pier. Subject to any state, county, or commercial code which would supersede this condition, lighting on the pier will be kept to a minimum. J.C. Vineyard is as concerned for any unnecessary light pollution on its tranquil creek as our neighbors are and will strive to create as little light as possible. It has been suggested that all light be downward-facing, motion-activated, and warm with a color temperature rating up to 2,700 K. We believe that this is a very good target and we will endeavor to achieve this standard or better. Our caveat, however, is that low-line, motion-activated, soft lighting under 2,700 K for use on a pier may not be an easily obtainable combination. But we thoroughly agree with the objective and will in good faith find an acceptable combination if it becomes necessary. The pier will be operated between 7:00 a.m. and dusk throughout the year and without overnight mooring by anyone other than the owner. And one J.C. business sign unlighted not to exceed nine square feet.
All right. The board's heard the conditions.
Question for Mr. Morrison. So I think I've asked this in a previous meeting, but the commerciality of this pier will dissolve upon the sale of the property, right?
That's correct.
But the new owner could come back to us looking to re, or could reapply for this to be commercial again?
Correct. They would apply. They, they go through the same process, apply for a conditional use permit.
Who, and this may not be for you, Mr. Morrison, maybe for anyone. Who's going to be responsible for policing these conditions if the residents of Mill Creek call the county and say, "Hey, this is what's going on. It's not what the conditions were"? Who's going to be responsible to check into that?
That will be my responsibility.
Do you have any questions? Mr. Long?
Brian?
Yes. When we issue these conditional use permits, and we all know that, that any violations of it, it comes back to the county. Mr. Morrison takes care of it. But we do not put any wording in them to that. And I guess what I'm saying is that if we're going to do this, it should be wording in that any violations within this conditional use permit, that the pier will be, be decommissioned or pulled apart at the expense of the owner. And that would go for any other conditional use permit when it comes to a violation. Is that...
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The, the enforcement mechanisms that are, the county is authorized to exercise are in the county ordinance and in state code. So they don't need to be in the, the permit itself.
But could that ordinance in, in state code be referenced?
You, you could, but you don't have to.
I'd like to see it in there. I'd like to see it referenced.
So you want to see the actual ordinance section or the code section?
Sections. And have it referenced in, in the conditions.
That can be put in the, the permit itself.
And I think when it comes to these conditional use permits, that needs to be in there. I mean, it's easy, it's easy to, to say that Mr. Morrison's going to take care of it. But the public needs to be able to come back and be able to reference something if it's not being taken care of. They should not have to go and research it and bring it back. I'd like to see it in there.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, one other comment I might add. Mr. Morrison read out the additional conditions that have been proffered by the applicant. I just want to note that...
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
That the, the, those conditions were proffered in their letter dated July 9th, which was submitted a couple of days ago, obviously. So, and that's acceptable to, to them per the signature of, of Mr. Byrne.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to get that on record.
And I think we all have a copy of that letter here.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. We've all received that letter. All right. What's the pleasure to board here?
This motion is being made in due consideration of public health and safety and general welfare of the community, public necessity, convenience in, in, in the exercise of good zoning practices in pursuant to the body's statutory authority that the conditional use permit be approved with the conditional uses. And I'd like to see what I had requested be put in it as well.
All right. So the conditions that were read and the additional condition of that code section.
Yes. That, that to be referenced in the conditional use permit.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. I got a motion and a second. You got any other discussion? All right. If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those against. Mr. J.C., your motion passes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. The next item has been tabled from my right... You say something, Mr. Tadlock?
No. Mr. McKinley.
I'm just saying thank you very much.
Oh, okay, Mr. McKinley. Thank you, sir. Next item is to be tabled from a regular board meeting on June 13th. I'll pass that over to Mr. Tadlock here.
Yes, sir. The board held its public hearing on the disposal or the transfer of the public property located at 6958 Northumberland Highway, also known as the old E V B Bank. And this was in consideration of transferring that property to the school board. I think there were some questions related to some of the tax parcels. The county attorney has been in contact with the school board attorney. I think we've got a path forward. So if the board wishes to approve that transfer, transfer, if you could authorize me to go ahead and execute that deed subject to the approval by the county attorney.
And just, just to elaborate on that, Mr. Chair, if I may. When the county acquired that property, for whatever reason, in the property description, they, they conjoined the property description to include all of those various parcels into one property description. So it, the, the property description in the draft deed isn't clear that you wanted to exclude the parcel 28A, which is that parking lot right there.
Yes, parking lot there.
Right there. And so in, in cooperation with School Division Council, we've agreed to put, insert some language in the deed to exclude parcel 28A. And we can just do that by less, by including some, you know, legalese. It says, "Lessen accept the parking lot parcel 28A from the, from the transfer." So it, we'll include that in the deed. And if you want to go ahead and approve, approve it tonight, subject to the approval of the county attorney and authorize Mr. Tadlock to execute that deed accordingly. We can take care of it and we'll just get it done. If you'd rather wait and take action when you have the actual deed before you, that's fine too. But I know that everybody wants to get this resolved. So we can do that tonight if you like. You've already had the public hearing, so that's, that's done.
All right. How about parcel 26A, which I thought we had discussed about that one too?
26A.
That's the one that would be up in the upper left-hand corner. That's parking lot also. I know, know, know we had discussed both 26A and 28A.
Okay. I, I can go back to them and, and see if we can exclude that too.
Not that I don't want them to use it or anything. They, you know, even, even a lot, they're welcome to use at any time.
Yeah.
It's, it doesn't change anything.
Just don't want to, don't want the possibility of, of the county not being able to use it at some future date for some reason. Yeah, we can, I can see if we can do that. If, if I, if I can achieve that, then we'll go ahead and get that done too.
Fine to go with it.
If I can't, then I'll come back to you. How about that? Okay?
That's fine.
All right.
Is that all right with the board? All right. All right.
I'll need a motion to go ahead with that, if that's all right with the board, if you aren't wanting to.
All right. Any of y'all want to make it, or I'll make it. Motion so moved to go ahead with Mr. Gregory's request. All right, got a motion, a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. And next is a request to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. Mr. Ms. Heath, Mr. Phil? Marston, you take that?
Yes, sir.
River request by George and Renette Heath, owners, for an exception to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Ordinance to construct a dwelling within the resource protection area on properties owned or to residential waterfront. Property is shown as tax map parcel 36-1-111A and is located at 206 River Way Lane.
Mr. Heath, you here tonight, sir? Come on up, sir.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir. Help you take it.
Dog and hang meat in this place is so damn cold.
It's just, it's just beginning to feel good in here to me.
Okay, so if I'm up here trembling, that's where the...
Well, maybe we ought to start putting some jacket so that we...
Blankets or something. I'm Dave Bromley, I'm the designer of the home and representing Mr. Ms. Heath.
All right, would you just kind of tell us what you're interested in doing, sir?
Sure. We're interested in building the house 18 feet into the RPA on one side of the house and 17 feet into the RPA on the other side of the house. The reason for doing this is to save a grove of trees, I think State Department, I got a chance to look at that, is to save a grove of trees up there that's mature trees, it's got a good soil conditioner, a lot of cedar, a lot of running cedar to control the erosion, and also to improve the value and the visual of the creek. We like to use the house as a buffer, control the runoff coming from the hill, because it's not really that hill, it's a knob coming down there.
Mm-hmm.
All the gutters will be tiled back beyond the land side of the river.
Yes, sir.
In the infiltration trench designed by the county or an engineer, whoever we need to get designed to. We'd be willing to plant any additional trees or shrubs or whatever is needed, whatever the board recommends.
Okay. All right, and board members have any questions for Mr. Heath before I open the public hearing?
Where exactly are the trees that you would, that you're trying to preserve?
It's up there. There's an existing building down there that's a lot, from the left-hand side there, next to the well. There you end up with 50 by 75 feet. If you rip all that out, it'll cause more erosion problems, you know. It's going to be hard to force it, so, around all that, but the undergrowth that's there, it's not easier for us to do it on bludgeon soil.
Yeah, you got one, you got one oak there that's over so big, very much dead top into it, and you got some, what we call scrub pines.
Right.
And now, that awful thick in there, they would have to be thin in order for them to do anything.
Right. But if we start getting them in and pairing it up, the root system is going to leave a tremendous area to have to fill. We just feel like if we could avoid disturbing that area since it is established, maybe that would be better for the bay than going in and ripping it all up.
Okay. All right.
The pool itself is not going to be inside the setback, is that correct?
No, it may not even be a pool. We tried to plan this for the next stage, if there is going to be a pool.
Well, that was my next question. What role does the pool play in where you propose to put the house?
Nothing other than being shown that we can have an 18 by 30 pool.
I guess what I'm trying to get at is, if there was no pool, could the house be put there without being inside the setback?
It could. That would encroach upon the access between two buildings.
All right, Mr. Heath, what if you were to take your house and shift it back and shift it, I'm looking at it from the point with the water to my back. All right, I'd be facing your house. If you were to shift your house to the right just a little bit, I know that group of trees is there, but you could always thin them out a little bit, shift your house back and not encroach within the 100-foot buffer zone.
We could possibly do that, but I'm afraid there will be some trees that need to be taken out.
Well, that's small scrub stuff in there. That's what I'm looking at. I'm just, I'm just looking at a way to keep you out of the 100-foot buffer area, that's all.
We can try.
Mm-hmm. It would still give you room for your pool in there, you got 18 by 30 pool, still plenty of room, still plenty of room between your existing garage you have there. Still gives you plenty of room between your house and the well.
That's where that group of trees are, it's up there next to the well.
You got your well there, the trees coming out on this side.
That's right.
That 100-foot RPA is right in that, right in the tree line. I think that big oak is probably within the 100-foot buffer zone or close to it. It's not too far from it. Yeah.
I think you're right.
Yeah.
We'd like to try to get as, as close to where I've got it set up on the plans there, so that we don't have to tilt the house cockeyed around there, so the front it kind of lines up as we drive in.
Okay.
Also get a better view, because there's a groove of trees down in the 100-foot buffer that comes around kind of like Hat Moon.
Yes, yes, they do.
And I know you're not going to let us cut those, so...
I'm just, I'm just asking questions, that's all. I'm asking questions, and I looked at everything down there. You got a nice view looking up the creek right there.
Yes, sir, it is.
Yes, it is.
I'm not Mr. Heath, though.
You're not?
No, this is Mr. Bromley.
Huh?
This is Mr. Bromley. He's representing...
Oh, I thought that was Mr. Heath. I'm sorry.
He's also commanding.
Well, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Site was improving, but it's, no, it's not.
Would you say it was an improvement?
Your site not improved.
Oh, my site's not. Why you think I got my glasses on? I couldn't see anything.
His hair just blow off.
Yeah, hair a little pissed.
I'm sorry, Mr.
Bromley. We knew who you were.
I'm sorry.
I'm not Mr. Basie, though.
Right, that's right.
Mr. Long, my gym teacher.
That's right.
All right, I'm sorry, sir. Any other, any other board members have any comments, questions before I open the public hearing? All right. I'll open the public hearing now, Mr. Bromley. I see you on the sign-up sheet. That's fine, that's fine. If you want to say something else, that's fine, too.
I think I put enough.
All right. All right. I don't have anybody else on the sign-up sheet, would anybody else like to speak tonight? Anyone else like to speak on this issue tonight? All right, do I have anyone in, anyone that's online tonight like to speak on this public hearing, on this exception to the B Act? Anyone online that would like to speak about this exception to the B Act? All right, since we have no one else wants to speak, I'm closed the public hearing and the matter is for the board. So, what's the pleasure to board?
Do we have any comments or concerns from adjacent property owners?
Not that I know of. I haven't seen any. Has anybody seen any?
I don't know.
And Mr. Marston, you have any suggestive conditions here, sir?
I did receive one email from an adjoining property owner, which was more or less some questions that I was able to answer, and that should be included in the board docs.
It is. Administrative content.
Okay. That's what it is, Mr. Long, you need to see it? I don't know, Mr. Bromley, I'm still, I'm still looking at shifting the house back a little bit to get it out of that, out of that RPA. If you shift it straight back, you can still get it out of the RPA. Shift it, or at least get some of it out of the RPA instead of encroaching almost 19 feet.
Can we split the difference? Shift it back 10 feet?
Up to the rest of the board.
To me, the issue is the encroachment, whether it's one foot or 50 feet, and what precedent we're going to set going forward. I don't know what you guys have done before I got here, and this is the first one that's come up since I've been here, but that's my issue.
Right.
Well, Mr. Williams, I will say it has to be a hardship, and that's why I'm looking at that as no hardship here. If there was no other room, then I would suggest that we leave it as is, but there is room to make a change. And that's what we've done in the past. If there was no room to go backside or whatever, then yes, we were granted a request.
Do you agree with the change?
Yes, sir, I think we could sort of push it back 10 feet, if it helps.
That would be going back all 18 feet.
I'm sorry, sir.
That would be keeping it out of the 100-foot buffer area, because you don't have a hardship here, sir.
Same.
So, it's, you have the room to shift it over to the other, to the other RPA that's on the right, if the water is to my back, so you can shift it over a little bit and keep everything out of the 100-foot buffer area.
And we just have to take down trees?
Yeah, one, two trees there, I hate to see them go, but I'm just trying to stay out of the 100-foot buffer area, because that's what, that's what we've been, that's what we have done in the past. Now, if you didn't have any room there to go either way, yeah, I would, I would consider allowing you to do it. Is that all right with you, Mr. Fisher, since that's your district? I haven't heard any comment from you.
I think one of the things that hinders your situation is building the garage first. Had that garage not been there where it is now.
Yeah, that's been there for a number of years.
Yeah, that's...
You're absolutely right about that.
That's what's causing the problem.
Yeah.
And, and I, I understand your problem, but at the same time, we have to do these things equal to everybody on the same basis, and if it's not a hardship there, we'd be held responsible.
Yeah, I, I understand, you know, trying to get it where it looks good and all that, but I'm looking at that hardship, and I just don't see one there.
Well, the answer was no unless I asked.
That's what you have to take. As the rest of the board feel.
So, you agree, it's your district, so you agree with Richard?
Yes, I'm agreeing with Richard. So, I'll just go ahead and make a motion when you're ready for it.
Make a motion at the time you want.
Make a motion that we leave it as it is.
Yeah, that we deny the request.
Do we need to...
Yeah, you need to read that?
This motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety and the general welfare of the community, public necessary convenience, and the exercise of good zoning practices in the pursuit to the body's stationary authority. And I'll make a motion that we deny it.
All right, got a motion. I'll second it. Got a motion and a second. Got any other comment?
You understand why it's been denied, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. No other comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Bromley, I'm sorry.
That's where it goes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And maybe next time you come, we'll turn it down a little bit lower?
Please.
Go ahead and say it, you buddy.
Nice seeing you, Mr. Bromley.
Thank you. All right. What's the next thing we got, Mr. Tadlock?
Personal property.
All right, Mr. Tadlock, you take your next one, sir?
Yes, sir. Next public hearing is in order to consider an amendment to the fiscal year 25 budget resolution to include the following personal property tax rates for the year 2024. Personal property, the tax of $3.60 per $100 of assessed valuation at 35% assessment ratio per J.D. Power Appraisal Guide on all taxable motor vehicles as defined in Sections 58.1-3503A3, 58.1-3503A4, 58.1-3503A5, and 58.1-3503A9. Personal property, a tax of $3.60 per $100 of assessed valuation at 40% assessment ratio of J.D. Power Appraisal Guide on all other taxable personal property.
All right. So, you're asking us to consider amendment here?
Yes, sir. The original budget ad had 35% for all personal property. The fiscal year 25 budget was built on the 40% assessment ratio for personal property, with 35% ratio for the vehicles.
All right, so basically, we're just increasing from 35 to 40%.
Yes, and because the, the specific tax is done on a calendar year basis, we are able to modify this at this time. You have to do it prior to the books being transferred from the commissioner revenue to the treasurer, and that has not occurred yet. Yes, you do need to have a public hearing, and you cannot take action on it for the one week time period.
All right, before I open the public hearing, I don't know if the board members have any other comments or questions on to it. All right, if you don't, I'll open the public hearing. I have no one on the sign-up sheet, would anyone like to speak on this issue? Anyone like to speak? Come on up, sir.
Mandell Jackson, 1577 Frontier Road in Heathfield. I wasn't planning on speaking today, I just got a question. I'm a little naive, so y'all work with me. Does this mean our taxes are going up?
Tax rates already have been set.
So, what is this, I mean, I'm a little, can you explain this to me or no comment from the board?
So, Mr. Chair, real quick, this is not increasing the tax. It basically is the same as it was last calendar year, when it was advertised, it was advertised at 35%, and it should have been advertised at 40%. So, there's no change in regards to the personal property from last calendar year to what's being proposed here.
Okay, for 2024?
Correct.
2025 is a different story.
That, that's next year.
Next year.
Right.
Okay. I just want to get some clarification, I'm learning all this, so I just want to plan my money. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? All right, anyone online like to speak? Anyone online like to speak? All right, since we don't have anyone else to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the matter is for the board. What's the pleasure to board?
We actually have to wait the one week, Mr. Chairman.
You need a motion to carry through with it, or?
No, I think it's just a matter of scheduling another work session with the board.
All right, good night. I just want to, just want to clarify that.
Yes, the resolution is in board docs for your information.
It's a week, seven days?
Seven days, yes, sir. But that is the resolution that we would need to adopt once we get through that time period, the required time period.
All right. All right, one more. Mr. Tadlock, you got amendment to the fiscal year 2024 budget?
Did you all want to go ahead and set a time to have that scheduled, in case anybody was listening for?
For a day? Seven days from now?
The earliest you would be able to do that would be next Thursday. The earliest you would be able to do that would be next Thursday. There is a planning commission meeting that night at 7:00 P.M.
You all want to meet next Thursday?
Can't.
What time y'all want to meet? Four, five?
I can't be here Thursday.
You got a problem, Chip?
Thursday, I do, yeah.
Yeah, I do, too.
All right. We would have to do that then Friday or next week or the week after that?
Do it Friday. Monday, which one?
Monday, Tuesday.
Friday or Monday?
Monday, gentlemen, I got class. I got to be in person class.
How about Friday?
Can't be here Friday either.
Friday is fine.
Chip, Chip, yeah, make...
Can't do Friday.
Can't do Friday either.
You care about a Friday meeting, huh?
Mr. Williams can't do Friday.
You can't do Friday again?
I can do Tuesday.
Tuesday, not next week, Tuesday, the following week, which would be the?
Twenty-third.
Twenty-third?
How about that Thursday? Can we do that Thursday?
That's twenty-fifth.
That's the early side to do it.
Twenty-fifth, then?
Twenty-fifth.
What time y'all want to meet?
In a minute.
What time? Early?
Five, six?
Five. Is it good for everybody?
Five good for everybody?
That's what I'm trying to see if I'm going to be here.
You all right, Jim?
No, I'm trying to find it now, but we'll work it around. If not, I'll call in.
All right.
If that's doable.
So we were planning on meeting July the twenty-fifth, 2024, at 5:00 P.M.
What it built, 5:00 P.M.
All right.
Twenty-fifth.
Is that all you need, Mr. Tadlock?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next item, Mr. Tadlock, you have on your agenda?
Yes, sir. Our next public hearing is in order to consider an amendment to the fiscal year 2024 budget. This budget amendment is for the purpose of appropriating monies for the VMRC abandoned or derelict vessel program grant, sheriff's office transfer, and ARPA law enforcement and tourism grant. And that total budget amendment is in the amount of $530,875.56.
All right. Board members got any questions on this before I open the public hearing? No questions? All right, I don't have anybody on the sign up sheet that wants to speak. Anybody in the audience want to speak tonight? All right. Anybody online would like to speak? Anyone online like to speak about the budget amendment for the VMRC abandonment of derelict vessels and sheriff's grant? All right, close the public hearing and the matter is before the board.
We approve the budget amendments.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right. Tadlock, I don't have any more public hearings. Only thing I have left is convening in a closed meeting. If the board's ready for a motion, we will go into a closed meeting.
Need a motion that... That I need a motion that the Northumberland County Board of Supervisors convene in a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Freedom of Information Act, Section 2.23711A1, for the discussion consideration of personnel matters, Section 2.23711A3, for the discussion or consideration of potential acquisition of real property for a public purpose or of the potential disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the board's bargaining position or negotiating strategy. Section 2.23711A7, for consultation with legal counsel and/or staff pertaining to specific legal matters where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the board's negotiating or litigating posture. Section 2.23711A8, for consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Invited to attend the closed meeting as necessary are the county administrator, county attorney, building official, and assistant county administrator because they are deemed necessary and their presence will reasonably aid the board in its consideration of the topics to be discussed pursuant to Virginia FOIA, Section 2.23712F.
All right. Can I have a motion?
Motion, me.
Second? Motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank y'all for coming. We are going into a closed meeting.
Ray, I need a motion that the Northumberland Board of Supervisors return to public meeting and certify by roll call vote that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting.
Motion, me.
Got a second?
Second.
A motion, second. Roll call vote. Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Long?
Aye.
Mr. Brand?
Aye.
Mr. Fisher?
Aye.
Mr. Tanyi?
Aye.
We're now back in the open session, gentlemen. We need action taken on a couple of things.
Yes, sir. First item is the certification increase for Mr. Holden Olive from EMTI to EMT Paramedic. Need a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $5,509.06.
I move that we approve the supplemental appropriation for the EMS provider in the amount of $5,509.06 to take effect July 1, 2024.
All right, got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, next item.
The hiring of Mr. James Weldon contingent upon the approval of the background check.
Background check.
And that would be $37,907.17.
All right, who's going to make the motion?
I move that we hire Mr. Weldon at that dollar figure.
All right.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
And that would is contingent upon the background?
Contingent upon his background check, yes, sir.
All right. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those against?
All right. Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
The background check. Contingent on the background check. As long as he didn't have any felonies or things like that, that's what you're looking for?
Yeah, this is filed with the Virginia State Police.
Right. But as far as drunk driving charges or misdemeanors, what do you consider that?
The way that that language is written in the personnel policy is depending on what the charge may be and what department that individual is working in. It would be up for further discussion, depending on what those charges.
I just didn't know where you drew the line.
Yeah, I think it depends on what the department is and what we're looking for.
Most everybody's got a little something, you know, here and there. They're way off.
Mr. Penick, too. Any time you want, Mr. Long.
Solid waste sites were in terrible shape this past week. I know the one over in Dinsley and right down the road. What is the problem?
When did you go, Mr. Long?
What day was that, Chip? You remember?
Was it Sunday?
I didn't see it. I just heard it from a couple of folks.
Yeah.
The Fourth of July was on the first one.
Might have been a Saturday, too. Oh, man, they were terrible.
I know I went there on Sunday, and there were bags piled up. But they were in the process. They had two or three individuals there that were in the process of putting the bags in the compactor. I think it's multiple things going on. I think that, one, it's timing in getting that debris pulled on those compacters. But we're seeing a large influx of individuals coming into the county.
Yeah, I told you that.
I think you're seeing that at the waste transfer sites.
Well, I agree with that.
And I'm sorry, I'm going to cut you off.
No, no, let me cut you off.
I did reach out because I did see that Sunday. I did hear some other complaints regarding Lotzberg. I'd heard that they were turning people away. I did reach out to Vince Waste Management today. And I did ask him the question if they would be able to... Because we are seeing larger numbers. If that's something that we can have more open tops available at the dump sites so that we don't have the trash laying next to the compactor waiting for the truck to show up to get that compactor and replace that. He did tell me they did run Fourth of July. They had trucks on the road Fourth of July. So I think it's multiple things. I don't think it's just one thing that you could point to.
Do they have the same number of trucks? Or have they increased the number? You don't know.
That I do not know. I think they, of course, contract that out. But I'm not able to answer that question.
We have a contract with these people to maintain these dumpsters in an efficient manner. And this county swells to eighteen, nineteen, twenty thousand people on a holiday weekend. And that's nothing new. It's been doing that for years. And they should have accommodations to take care of that when it happens. Our citizens shouldn't have to go by and have problems because they fall down on the job when they know in advance it's going to be a large scale trash pickup.
That's my concern.
Absolutely, absolutely. Anybody has problems, and you have to work with them. I like to work with people. But when this continuously happens, you got a letter from Tommy Tomlin not too long ago saying the same thing. And you know on holiday weekends, those trash dumpsters are going to run over. And they're going to run over because you don't have enough manpower and trucks to come in there and unload them like they should be loaded on a regular basis.
Every other business in the county makes changes to accommodate that influx of people.
Exactly. And we pay for this to happen seven days a week, 24 hours a day, not every day except holidays.
Right.
That's my concern.
How much has tonnage increased?
I can get that.
I know it's got to be increased a lot for all the people that are here.
We get the run sheet, and I can get that information.
It increased a lot when COVID come around. And a lot of those COVID people have never left here. The ones that came and kept around.
They never left here.
And that's been going on for three, four, five years now.
I agree with that because that's when we really started seeing the influx of...
How about a higher, you know, paper for when we hire people? Do we get the higher ordinance?
We approved that last month, yes, sir. That's in place.
We using that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, the last thing I have. I know that we do so many cleanups, right, during the year? And I know some counties are paying for extra cleanup at the end. Do you know how much that would be?
I know Mr. McKenzie had gotten some estimates from what other localities were doing. And he spoke a little bit about that last month in applying for the litter grant through the state and possibly using some of those monies for that. I know he's applied for that grant.
Okay, and the sheriff department got those covers, way to cover, cover your truck or whatever when you haul it. And you see a lot of people around still, and that trash is blowing off. And somebody's car got damaged last week. I just happened to be in that area with that stuff blowing off. I thought we were giving tickets when you see people like that because some of them still driving with that trash, and there's no cover on it, you know?
Yes, sir.
So we need to do something. I mean, it's damaging. Like I said at first, it's beginning to damage people's vehicles with that stuff. And these people supposed to have that stuff covered.
Well, there is a state code on that unsecured loads. And I don't know if the county actually has a code on that or not. I don't think they do. I think the county relies on the state code. I don't believe the county has a code section for unsecured load. And that's what it comes under statewide. Of course, the county can enforce state law, state code.
I think we need to because we don't want anybody to get seriously injured. I know at least three or four vehicles, including mine, got injured.
That's another grant that Mr. McKenzie... There are two separate grants for the litter. And that is a separate grant that Mr. McKenzie has applied for. And that's one of the things that the anti-litter committee is looking into, is to do that program, cover your load again. And they're seeking funds to obtain additional cargo nets.
Good. All right. That's all I have.
The county ordinance, 46-1. We need to look at and contact the owners of the old Herman Rowe store in Hys. The storefront's falling off. And it's nothing to go past that on the weekend. And you got people that are traveling down 202. Get out, and they get under that canopy that's falling off to take photographs with the old gas pumps.
Yep. They got the old prices right on.
Yep.
One corner of that building is coming down. It's been involved with accidents on several occasions. It's been involved with accidents on several occasions. It's never been repaired.
I know Mr. Plan has been looking into that, but we'll look at that.
I just don't want nobody to get hurt.
All right. What else we got?
All I have.
All right. Somebody got anything else? I'll take a motion to carry over till the 25th at 5:00.
Great. Well, you're getting shot.
All right. You want me to go on with the motion or take my time?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. Thank y'all for coming.